Say the pledge?
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let the record call that all is present, but Councilman Weaver, he has called in, was trying to make it, but it didn't look like he got here. We do have a forum, and we'll continue on with our public hearing. Business Ready Community Grant.
Guess I can explain what it is?
Yes.
So this is the initial public hearing for the application for the sewer expansion for economic development to the west of town through the Wilding Business Council. This would be a ninety-five-five grant, ninety-five percent by the business council, five percent by the town, as you showed me.
Then I goofed up, because I thought this was for the eighty-twenty grant.
For feasibility?
Yeah.
That was the last.
So because this is listed as Business Ready Community.
Yep, they're both saying thing, yeah.
So I messed up, and because of that, I was, I was prepared to talk about this and not this at all.
Gotcha.
I mean, that's what it says right here on this old minutes, right?
Yep.
So I messed up. Okay, that's all.
Kids are some questions that are concerns, it's, it's a ninety-five-five grant. Engineer's estimate was, we had two estimates, one's a little over a million dollars, and one was eight hundred and forty-seven, fifty thousand. Five percent match. So town, town's twenty thousand that we put towards feasibility study.
No, this, this one is PER.
Oh, this is the PER. Okay, I'm confused.
Yeah, this is, this is the sewer project, west of town.
So this is a sewer project we're talking about, not the motel?
Correct.
And, okay, and we spent twenty thousand dollars.
On Jim Gore's, the PER that we just completed.
Right.
And so this is, they were back to back, but this.
The twenty thousand dollars we spent will be towards our fifty thousand.
Correct.
Yes, on a million dollars.
So if we say no, we just threw twenty thousand dollars up in the air and a private Casper.
Well, and.
I'm not gonna say no, but I mean, that's one way of looking at it.
Well, that would be an end of, the, the, Wyoming mushrooms is also.
Yeah.
So that they would donate fifty thousand dollars towards this project.
How many readings do we have on this? So this first part is just a public hearing to get public input on it.
Okay.
For the requirements of the submission of the application. So we haven't even submitted the application.
We don't need to make a motion to accept the thing or.
Nope, this is just a, a legal process that we have to go through, just like the last one, same thing for public input.
I'm with you.
So that's.
Dial in to make it a public hearing.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't think.
Are we required a, a resolution on this one?
Yep, it'll be the same process as, that's why it's labeled the same, it's the same grant.
Right. And that got me confused, because, you know, I wish you would put sewer behind it or motel behind it, because.
Right, and I, I agree, because that, I wasn't thinking about that at the time, but after you pointed that out, it'd make more sense.
Yeah, because I was, you know, I was definitely ready for this one, talked about it and.
Hopefully after this in the future, they'll both be going forward, and both be on the same agenda, separate, not different meetings.
Okay, hopefully. No, I had people talk to me about this, and the biggest thing is they said, why aren't we taking care of the part of the town that needs it already? Why aren't we finishing that third phase?
Money. It's the, the leverage, leveraging money.
The question is, why can't we, why can't we leverage the money for that phase, the third phase over here, like we did here, like you were doing here?
This, this is for, why that we're available, this is ninety-five-five is because of economic development. We would not be eligible for this if it wasn't for the mushroom farm out there tying into it. We would not be able to, it'd be a fifty-fifty grant. When they, when we quit doing this back in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, or didn't do anymore, it was an eighty-twenty grant then, and it went to fifty-fifty. I know Mayor Peters fought very hard to try to get us eighty-twenty money. I have done the same thing without any luck. If it was eighty-twenty funding, we would have already done this, we've been proposed, already done this over here, especially on the east end of town. And the Maple Street is, and the two projects that we got left, the Maple Street's the expensive one. Yeah, because that's the, that's probably maybe another eight hundred thousand dollar job to, to do that, and that's fifty-fifty.
So do we have an exact map where the sewer line's going?
Yes, oh, yes.
For, for this expansion out to the mushroom farm?
We have a, we have a, we have a proposed that, that, that Jim Gore did for us.
It was in that thing.
Yeah, yeah, it's been a while since I looked at it. It goes into the mushroom property?
Yes.
Property? Okay.
And that, that makes us eligible for a ninety-five-five. Without their, their involvement, it's a fifty-fifty grant, we wouldn't be proposing it. And that's, that's why we're not, and I've explained that to many people, I've talked about it multiple times in council meetings. But that's why we, the, but Mayor Peters, that's why he stopped that down there was because of that. And with consulting with our Director of Public Works, the sewers are working. It's not a, it's not a, not an issue, but that's why we haven't moved forward on that. We're, you know, with this new infrastructure money that may come from the federal government, I, you know, we're looking at that. Maybe we can't do it, but we're through, through, through that, but we haven't got a chance, everybody's figured all that out. But, but, but I'm watching for that, to try to do that, because that'd be our opportunity to do, to do that then. So that's, but with the fifty-fifty grant, that's, that's why we haven't moved on that. And, and, and Buddy, if our Director of Public Works advised us that we needed to, that that was a priority, then we, then, then we would, but that was my, my questions with, with Bud, and so. That's, but that, that's why, and that's all, you know, I'll gladly explain that to anybody else studying, wants to come to.
Okay, and the mushroom farm wants to put in at least twenty housing units?
Well, they, they may or may not, they wanna, they, they, they plan to expand their business also.
But.
And, and, and they, they need, and they, they need housing. They, 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 they need housing out there also.
So it'd be a subdivision, in essence.
In, in essence, that would be a subdivision.
Therefore, they'd have to follow the subdivision guidelines?
Well, yes.
Okay. Even though it's on private property?
Yes.
Because it's not platted. They're gonna have it platted for a subdivision?
It's one of their requirements.
And do they have to, are they going to, which is gonna come first? We're gonna put in housing, and then we're going to expand, or we're going to expand and then put in?
No, no, we're, we're, you, you need.
I mean, them, the mushroom farm. Because I think that, I just think they're still going on hopes and dreams that we're gonna do, or I, I don't know. Just seems like a lot of effort for the town to be putting out for, they've not moved any houses in, they've been operational for.
Or, we won't be, we'll be spending very little money.
Well, I think it goes back to what Bob's talking about as well, and the public perception we have, that we're doing this for the mushroom farm, that.
That's it? People are saying, you're just doing this for mushroom farm?
No, we're doing this, that, 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 that enables us to open up the land we just purchased.
Joel, you're not listening to what I'm saying.
Okay.
I'm saying, you're in bed with them, you are renting your house to them, they, you're getting a profit off this group and saying, oh, I'm gonna put this mushroom farm, sewer line out for mushroom farm, because they're renting my house. That's the talk I'm getting from town. They're seeing you being bought off.
Well, I, well, I damn sure am not.
Well, I'm not saying you are.
I, I never even, I never even, that never even crossed, crossed my mind, what I'm doing is for the betterment, as you show me.
It's perception.
There you go.
Do you understand that? I'm not saying you are, I'm saying.
But, but how can I, how can I explain that we get a million dollar sewer line for nothing?
But you're not doing it for nothing, you're doing it for the people who are renting your house, property.
No, I'm not. I know, it's for the betterment.
No, 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 no.
It, it, I don't. But that is not the truth.
You can't change perception.
Not might, it is be.
You can't change perception.
No, I can, and if, I can't prevent someone from being stupid. Just flat ass right. This is, this is for the betterment of the talent of Shoshone. I don't know how many times we've gotta explain it, anybody wants to come down and discuss this, I'm happy to talk about. This will enable us to expand west to the lots there. We're hoping we're gonna get housing for city employees, school and school employees. That's was the, been the plan that, that I've been trying to encourage for when I was even on the council, to get a housing at a reasonable price for city employees and, and, and school teachers, school employees. In my original vision, where the football field is, that was what, what I, was my perception, if we could have bought that land, that's what I would have, would have liked to see done there.
And the perception is from the people in town, we have empty lots, they're not being developed, they're putting in eight trailers out here by the medical center. There's lots north of town, James has lots for sale in the past, nothing has sold. So why are we saying, this corner over here is gonna be magic, and everyone's gonna buy it? Those are the questions I'm receiving.
I, there may be people that would prefer the location out there.
I'll speak, I mean, I'm trying to buy a home here, there's not a home in this town that I would buy, right now, currently, besides the one that's right over there, down California.
It's sold.
It's sold. The point, the point is, is that you can't build a house on your own, you can't get a loan. What is being left on this conversation is that this project is linked to the economic development, that's how it links into a ninety-five-five grant. If we link it to housing, the state doesn't care, they don't think housing is important for business, or for business economic activity. It's the economic activity they look at, they leave out the housing aspect. That's why it's linked strictly to that. The other side of that coin is the housing aspect and developers, which we've already talked, I've been in conversation with W C D A, they'll be here next week. And that's the link that they will actually build and actually provide with a developer to develop that land. And then you have ready-made houses that are developed and built and for sale versus a plot of land, this is here, here's lots of land, build it. That does, it's different methodology that's in place with this, as opposed to, it's comparing apples to apples instead of apples to baseballs, or whatever you wanna call it. So it's not about the mushroom farms specifically.
But you still have the, so I, I think there's two different ways to discuss this, you have what you're saying, which I would say is valid. And you, and you have, so you have the perception of two people right here, one says, I wanna build a house in this area. And that's, or the world would say, this person must build a house, but this person is renting to the people that are, that have jumped up and said, we'll give you fifty thousand to put in this project as well. I said, it's perception.
They're not giving me, they're giving, giving the town.
Well, I. We, we.
There's no conflict to interest, because you're not benefiting anything directly from what we're doing.
You're right, I agree with that.
Well, but perception is reality.
Perception is reality.
Well, we taught school for thirty years, we know how that works.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Some of it through evolution, you can change perception, some of it, but some of it is. I guess perception wise, if you look at it this way. I do some work, I do a lot of work, and have some help getting this stuff done, and that's what the town, in essence, is invested in this whole project. When it's all said and done, when it all shakes out, between the grant and the mushroom farm is going to donate fifty thousand dollars to the town, the town is out zero. So.
No, we're more than expect twenty thousand.
But that goes towards the fifty thousand that we would be responsible for, if it's a million dollar project, and if the mushroom farm donates fifty thousand dollars for it, we get that twenty thousand back.
Okay, that's never been stated until now.
I did not know.
Did you know that?
Let, let it, let it, let it be known in the record that Councilman Weaver has arrived and is present for this meeting.
Yeah, Chris is right, it, it was stated that the twenty thousand put up front would come back.
Okay, did I miss that?
But that brings the question, is, are they gonna get fifty?
But if, you know, you, you're also, the mushroom farm has plans for expansion, but they can't, will not be able to do that without housing. Many of the jobs are gonna be well-paid jobs that's coming into town. They, they just hired two other people that make quite a, you know, substantial amount of money, they're paying better, and they're bringing in some higher-paying jobs that they, but without the housing, with, without housing, they can't, they, that will stop them. You gotta have the housing. And without the housing, their, their, that project is, could be dead in water, and that could add a lot of economic development. We get enough people here, maybe we can have a cafe again, a viable cafe. Those are, those are things, we just need, we need more people living in here, or we're gonna continue to do what we don't, we may get a grocery store. But that is, you know, and that's the truth. But without housing, they won't be able, won't be able to expand. There, there, there's, Fastlane intends to hire more people, they need more housing. The rental units we have, that they put out the trailers on, Cindy sent hike, that High Country.
Yeah.
High Country, yeah, they're, you know, they're, they, they plan to bring in, they have planned to have nine total, they have, I believe, five in now, and they're, and they're, they're all rented. They're all spoken for, and they're planning on bringing four more in the near future, she's, they're, before the, the trailers they bring in are, are nice trailers, or they don't bring them in, and so.
But the, the thing that's, all that out there with the development, it's not dirt roads. This stuff, I can't do anything about these dirt roads for the last hundred years, I can't, there's just nothing out there for me to do about those. The developers that would develop that would be curb, gutter, wastewater, it would actually be a subdivision, it would be more appealing. And I just got done, actually at the bank today personally, and what's happening right now is we have an influx of people, the state's expected to grow at ten percent population-wise, because of the mass exodus from everywhere else. Landers being priced out, so they're going to Riverton, Riverton's being priced out, so now the two places we're looking at is Shoshone Pavilion. So if we're on the forefront of that, and we can get there by using this as a mechanism to get there, it doesn't cost the town anything in the end. I'm not really sure how I can explain a perception thing, I understand that, but I think that's just a deflection thing to say, what about this, when there's this? There are two separate issues, and they don't correlate the same.
Well, I think we should put a water line down the Bonneville Road to my property, so I can expand, because I'm years ahead of the mushroom farm. But I can't suggest stuff like that, because that would definitely be perceived poorly with my position on the council. But that is hands down, I've proven more years of longevity there, and I have no water.
Okay, I've had, people ask me, why aren't we expanding, why don't they just go north out to Baptist Church, where culters are?
We, we, I mean, those are things that people are throwing at me and saying, I can't answer.
Keep, keep in mind, I've said this before, keep in mind, we own the property. If a developer was to come in and say bought the same property we just bought, say Mike bought the property, wanted to expand this million dollar sewer project, he would have to pay for that. And that, he would have to factor that into the price of the property. We can be able to do that, and, and I'm, I would like to be able to sell the property, and particularly to, to teachers and citizens and, 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 and town employees. I'd like to be able to sell that land very reasonable to help them be able to, to afford a home and buy a home in Shoshone.
Based upon our subdivision ordinances, the price of a sewer project, the town is required to participate in part of it. Based upon the size of the sewer line being put in. For certain diameter sewer lines, it's fifty, fifteen percent, larger sewer lines, it goes up, up. So is that being taken, considered as part of our money as well? Are you aware of that, Joel?
Yeah, we're putting, we're putting it, we're putting in the mains, and then we can work with the developers on the other, the rest.
I, I think you're missing my point. This is underwater, wastewater. I read through this, okay, so. This is under section, whatever, twelve? Section twelve, yeah. Here it is. Extending of ministry's participation bearing cost of large mains. A, for ten inch mains, percentage of municipality's participation shall be fifteen percent. For twelve inch mains, it shall be twenty-five percent. For fifteen inch mains, it shall be thirty-five percent. So is this being taken care of, that fifty thousand dollars or whatever, is that being covered in here by those ordinances that we have right here?
The, the state is provide, between the state and the, and the mushroom farm, they're providing a hundred percent.
Because let me ask you a question, just to clarify, so are you talking about just this portion of the expansion that we're?
That's right, we're talking about this whole west side addition.
That, that, none of this would actually apply to that, because it's a grant from the state that would actually cover all that, so that.
We're not sharing, we're not sharing the cost to a developer.
Off of that.
But we are the developer.
Yeah, we're not, but we're not sure, if they're looking at, if you're looking at subdivision and say ABC's, say, well, say, it might want to do, and he wanna go in there, and, and it's a million dollars, so you're saying if it was a ten inch line, we're.
Hundred and thirty thousand.
Eighty inch line, it's gonna be an eighty inch line out there, but there's a certain percent that, so if we're gonna develop, you're saving the million dollars, we'd have to come up with a hundred, if it's fifteen percent, a hundred and fifty thousand, and, and, and Mike would have to pay eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, so, all I'm asking is, we're going to, because the state is saying they're gonna pay a hundred percent, the mushroom farm's gonna pay fifty percent, or five percent.
Yeah.
Okay. We are just gonna, but we are the developer, that's what I'm trying to point out, where, where's our responsibility?
Well, that's gonna, that's gonna be a city, that's gonna be a city-owned sewer line.
I'm not arguing with that.
That's our responsibility.
There's two different, there's two, split it in half. I think what Bob's saying, if, if, if the mushroom farm wants to put in a subdivision on that side of the street, then that's not covered under the grant, correct?
The grant takes there, yeah, correct, they would have to expand out.
Right, so if they have to expand out, then Bob is saying, so we're gonna have to put up that hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand, or whatever it is, because based on ordinance, it's in their subdivision, but we have to spend that money, but that's not covered in grant.
No, that'd be a different conversation for.
That's a, that's a whole different conversation. And it's talking about sewer mains.
Right, so.
About the individual houses.
Right, right. Finish line, twelve inch line.
Right, right, our line out there is gonna be an eight inch line.
Okay.
The main line.
But after we, after that grant, once they start developing houses, and they, and they want to tie in, then the town has to put up.
Okay, but like it says, except, okay, okay, that, so I didn't know what size lot, lot we're putting in. Except, except for such as, or single sewer district subdivision or development under one ownership, which is the mushroom farm. Should require a main greater than eight inches in diameter. The municipality shall participate in costing in selling the larger line, since this is an eight inch line, it's mute.
Right.
Okay.
Unless they put in, is there a stipulation on how many houses can be up that imaginary road?
That's their problem.
There, I, with, with, with Jim Gore's amount of houses we're talking, and it's worth that word, talking, we may put in it, and they may, that may, the mushroom farm may or may not put in there, that would, he said, Lionel handle the expansion even on the other side. So he said, he says that eighty inches is, is good enough.
Okay.
I asked him about sizing, because that's what they do, and there's our line down Maple Street, we have any, is that big enough? It's twelve inch. And it's, yeah, he says we're, we're good. I'm not the engineer, that's what, you know what I mean, that's why we hired them.
I have a question. Get right down to it.
Okay.
How much money are we spending tonight?
Zero.
Right?
I, I'm still on the clock.
Well.
Well, no, 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 a council, a councilman, all get paid for this.
Yeah, but you know what I mean.
Right.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I was just trying to.
And to apply for the, for the grant, we're spending exactly.
Well, zero.
Zero, or whatever time.
Just time, yeah.
So I don't have any heartburn yet, because when we're out looking for funds and spending nothing to do it, I'm generally pretty much in favor of that, but if it comes back with some caveat that, that we can't do, then we have to revisit it, you know, you see what I'm saying?
Tonight's still, it's just to get to the next level.
I understand, getting back to how it started, though, the perception thing, I think that is something that, you know, I'm not on council, but I think that's incumbent on the council members, that if they see the utility in this, to explain it in a way, and the information is my job to give you the information, to explain in a way that is discernible to the people. That's my job to get to you that information, the mayor's job to get you that information to do so, that's all I can say.
So it comes back to the question, could say, so if we're looking at economic development, then I could come right back to mine and say, well, why can't we go that direction? why can't we go that direction, so we can economically develop that way?
We can.
So the perception would be, if I had hurt feelings, I'd say, well, gosh, I, I could use this stuff, I don't have enough employees, I don't have enough blah, 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 we're growing, but.
Come with a plan.
Bring a business plan, and that's how, I can do that.
No, you can excuse yourself from voting and.
So that being said, where's the mushrooms farm business plan?
That's what they have to submit with, with this grant.
With the grant.
I have to submit all that, they have to have the plans, they have to have all that stuff that goes with that for this to work. I can't do, I can't just say, I hope and dream, they have to actually have plans of what is going to happen for this to be looked at, because it goes through the Wyman Business Council. And then after the Wyman Business Council votes on it, and yea or nay, then it goes back to SLIP, and then that's the process that it goes, so it has to.
And that's the, SLIP's like your plan.
So that, that stuff being said, is this a, a three month, six months, one year?
Oh, this will probably be a two year before it's all done.
Before grants issued?
No, 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 before the project's done.
Oh, so that's what I mean, so from right, so, because we're having a meeting, we just had a meeting two days ago, so there's part of me that says there's some urgency for some reason.
Okay, I get what you're saying, so we have to have the application by the fifteenth.
And so they have their stuff already by the fifteenth?
And that's the business council, correct, yes. Uh, uh, the tenth, I believe, is, would know have it, and then we have to incorporate that in by the fifteenth. That's to make the deadline for the Wyman Business Council's meeting on September first.
September first.
And then from there, then I'll go to the SLIP's next meeting, I believe in December, or February, and then that's where it would go in, into next year, before it's actually awarded. And then they would, just like the tap projects, everything else with SLIP, the previous projects, that's where that would come into play next year, the planning, the engineering, all that stuff.
Fiscal year or calendar year?
Kind of, I think it'd probably be awarded in the count, in the fiscal year, but not actually start work until probably, I would suspect, actual into the ground until next fiscal year.
Yeah, first thing, the first thing to be done is planning, you'd have to, uh, pick a, an engineering, man engineering firm, whether with, and SLIP will be involved with that selection. Interview engineering firms, pick an engineering firm, and then the engineering firm get into design, put it out for bid. Gets bid.
But no one's gonna put a shovel in the ground for at least a year.
I can't say for sure, I would suspect, probably, I think that's probably.
So that's what's interesting.
It could, it, 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 it could be late summer next year, want to start before winter, but it could be.
So if you're between a year, that's, that's the part that comes back to speed, interesting as far as someone that wants to expand and grow, but they're willing to say, we're not gonna do this for the next two year, I mean, year, two years until, that's just.
No, there are way, they'd be waiting, they're, they'd be, they're waiting.
Right, what are you gonna do in the meantime? I mean, you got a lot of people that live in your house as is, I mean, you're gonna rent another house, or, I, I don't, I don't know that some of these things, just, it's just interesting to me that they're willing to wait.
Well, it, it, mainly it's waiting for the engineering, that's gonna be the thing, is, is getting engineering and then contracting and all that stuff.
Yeah, and their, their expansion, they've spent millions out there already, and their expansion, it'd be, be a lot more, and they, and plan to employ quite a few more people.
I plan to employ more people too, but, you know, our phone does not ring from the mop to lander, so.
Well, another thing we gotta look at too, is the expansion going that way, the town's also invested that way.
Yes.
And that's a huge thing.
And I bring back someone like Chris, it's kind of almost off topic, so you're in a position, you have to wait a year before you can do, before you could start building a home, sir?
So.
Two years?
Um, well, if I wanted to build a house, I could get a loan, and it would probably.
I mean, on the property out there?
Oh, out there?
That's where you're thinking to go, yeah, I mean, that's what.
Oh, yeah, that's where I would, if I was gonna build a house, that's where I would build.
So that's, so anybody, well, I guess, say to anybody that had interest in wanting to develop on the town property, should anticipate a year to two years?
For, potentially, I mean.
Well, it's not planning yet, we haven't, we haven't had that report yet.
But that should be done here soon, yeah, plat.
Uh, I'm not sure where they're serving, they should be, it should be, yeah, yeah.
Cape should be done soon.
Should be by, let's say, Labor Day. Then what happens after that, because Chris is waiting for a place to build, that's just that forty acres, it's not going across a few yards, horse across the street. Correct? So that hasn't even been touched yet, has it, with a surveyor?
No, no. So that, it's part of the surveying, but, yeah, it's like it's.
We, we need, this is, that, the, the immediate uh, building, I think, would take place, that's also where we'd like to expand our, you know, senior housing, is in that, in that, we own that land, that'd be a great place to expand that also.
But see, if I was five years in the future, and all this, say, all this was done, and I was five years in the future, I, all this would be done, I'd be like, this is where I'm gonna build, it's already ready to go, I could move right now and do it. So I'm thinking five years, ten years down the road, fifteen years down the road, yeah, it's gonna suck that I can't build a house, or I wanna build one in the next year. Don't get me wrong, my, my wife is, I'm surprised she's still with me at this point, but, um, you know, that's just, it's part of the, the economics of the situation of the world right now, part of it is the availability, I could build there right now, if I wanna put a septic in. I could absolutely do that, but I would rather be on sewer, town sewer and town water, and I, than me from my position here is that, that is something I'm supposed to do, is to find ways to grow our utility services, to get more customers to move it out, and look at the cost benefits, and that's why I spoke with Buddy, I said, how much is the urgency, and I believe I even said in the council meeting, or maybe as individually, that if it was existential crisis, I'd say, yeah, we can financially do that last phase, we have the money to do it. But what's gonna be left after we do a fifty fifty grant, we can do like that, this isn't gonna cost anything. And that's, but the benefits in five years, ten years to the town, and the abilities to do things, and have different decisions that the different council will have to make on people that are moving out there, that opens that whole thing up to a wealth of opportunities that otherwise wouldn't exist. Now, this was done five years ago, and is already done, just hypothetically, it'd be a whole different conversation, now you guys might be talking more about developers, and how you're gonna develop, and what, what terms are you gonna sell the stuff to, you know, how it's gonna be more beneficial to towns, all that would already be out there. Versus right now, it's not, so I have force, I have to wait, just because of the reality of the world right now, or a year, maybe two, but I can start planning. You can start making those preliminary plans for building, contracting, getting the loan, getting everything worked out. As you would still have to trench in the line to wherever it's gonna go, so all that can still be done, would have to be done no matter what. And that can be done prior to this project being completed, so it wouldn't be as long of a gap after, it would be two years for it to be done, and then there are two years before somebody builds. They can be seamless, and that's where working with our partners with the state, and W C D A, among others, and their list of contractors that do this for, they just did their jobs similar to this up in Gillette. Uh, when we were down at the Lam Conference, that's one of the things that we were talking about. And the opportunity is there, the money's there, the finance is there, now is the time to be able to get that opportunity out there, that we're not having to come up with our own ways to pay it. But it gives us more utilities, it gives us more customers down the road, and more potential for that growth to take place. But the thing is, it has to be linked to economic, economic activity. I, that's, I didn't write the rules, I don't think it's, makes sense, if you build it, you have nobody that can come, then how, how can you have anyone there? But that's the metrics that the state has.
You know, and we gotta admit, there's people in this town that does not want Shoshone to grow, there were people happy that it's dying, they, they really don't give a crap. Be honest, there's people that don't wanna see any more businesses come in. There, they, people say they want a cafe, but you gotta have enough, gotta have enough people to support the cafe, people say they want a grocery store, well, you gotta have enough people here to support a grocery store, we used to have enough people to do that. If we don't continue to improve our town, it will, it'll continue to go on and decline, we're, we, our clinic was a big step forward to get people come, our, our new town plaza, uh, people like the aesthetics, it looks nice. These are things we need to do, uh, we already own the land west of town, that's a lot of interest building there. And we would not be able to afford that expansion on our own without taking advantage of a ninety-five, five grant. I mean, though I make, that makes it affordable, and, and we're building for the future, and just takes, depends how long it takes to go through the bidding process, and the design, and when we start breaking dirt on that, but that was.
Mr. Mayor, just since Bob mentioned that I'm now a developer, or the town is. My take on it, and I could be way off base, is even if that didn't populate to the degree we'd like to see it, those lots can be sold below market value, and we will way below market value, and we'll recoup what we paid for.
Well, well, what we paid for was reimbursement money that came from the police department's reimbursement request.
People ask that question to us, like, well, we don't have to have the whole thing full.
No.
It'd be nice, but what I'm saying is.
Yeah, either way.
And then everything beyond that is kind of icing on the cake.
And because of the way we've acquired the land and everything, we're, we, would enable us to, to sell the land at a very reasonable price, especially for city employees and, and, and teachers, I, I think. I really like, little city employees living here and have a good place to, I like to attract school teachers.
Young families.
Young, young families of town, I mean.
That's the future of this town, we gotta get some young families of this town.
And, and this, because the town's doing it, that can enable us to make, help make the homes more affordable. If they're, if they're looking at living in Riverton, a new teacher or something, or living in Shoshone, and, and we can get them a home quite a bit cheaper in Shoshone, maybe that'll attract them here.
I'll be honest, as I look at this, you know, I've watched the field of dreams build it, and they will come. But I would have never been in favor of the town spending a whole bunch of money to just buy some property, run a big water line out there, put a bunch of outlots out there and hope that something would happen to it.
I, I wouldn't either.
You see, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I wouldn't either.
Some people's perception still, but as long as it isn't costing anything to speak of, or we can recuperate it, I really, that doesn't give me any heartburn, but I do hear people are saying, what about out here, and out here, and out there?
What aboutism is probably one of the worst things going on in this country right now, whenever something hassles you, it's always, what about this, what about this, what about this, and you get lost in nothingness, and then you can't.
Sure, but I mean, I still have to look at them.
Well, yeah, that's something you guys have to answer, yeah, because, I mean, explain, that's what I'm trying to help you figure out how to do so, but, I mean, at some point, it's.
Well, I just tell people we haven't spent anything yet.
Really, actually?
And we've already got the water out there. We've got water going out.
Well, then, then I hear, I hear this one. Bo Weaver shouldn't be allowed to vote on it, because he has property out there, and he'll be able to use the sewer. And my take on that is, is Bo Weaver isn't gonna directly benefit a damn penny from putting that out there, it's actually gonna cost him to hook up to it. Well, you see, you see what I'm saying, the people's perception is, and let's be honest, the town still is divided somewhat amongst.
Sure.
Old school, new school, and we're under a microscope right now, like you wouldn't believe, I've got people that are asking me questions that I wouldn't even, how come that cop didn't have his seatbelt on? Being asked that.
He was out of.
You know what I'm saying, it's like, we need to buy everybody microscopes and binoculars, I probably shouldn't be saying this, since.
I would like to be able to.
Well, you know what I'm saying.
Put that microscope back on them and see how they like it.
Yeah, but you know what I mean, then that just all builds perception, and I have some concerns that we'll discuss later about perception, that we can actually do something about, and so we'll work on that later on, next month, month after, whatever.
Well, that's what I'm trying to talk, is trying to, you know, what can I help to give you information for the perception aspect of things, I don't know, ideas or something, but for or against, whatever, but, um.
Well, when people tell me the mushroom farm looks like it's the tail wagging the dog, I, the only thing I can tell them is you're right, because they're the ones that are making the funding possible. But they're not, they don't have the town Shoshone under their thumb, but any stretch the imagination.
Well, no.
Yeah.
But that's the perception.
I know.
And so when they, people say, you know, I want this, people I'm listening to are saying, that's their perception.
Yeah, I know.
So you vote for their perception, or you vote for, yeah, so how do you, you know?
It's best for the town, I guess, but, I mean.
Yeah, if.
One way or the other.
If I'd have turned tail and ran every time I had people complaining to me, their perception of what the heck was going on in this town. We would not have that clinic, we would not have that, that new town plaza, I'm just telling you. Because we got that clinic, we was able to save a woman's life three weekends ago. With, without that, that probably wouldn't have happened, uh, there's, there, we, we gotta do what's best for the town, that's what's driving me.
Even with this stuff being done right here across the street, they're doing it because the town is moving forward.
Yes.
Flat out, flat out, the town is looking better, people are wanting to invest, you're not gonna invest on anything if your town's just going downhill, well, there's other places where you can invest where the towns aren't going downhill.
I mean, it's, uh, not, not everybody's gonna like change, uh, like I said, I, I envision for the football field is in the housing, teachers housing, that was my envision when I was on the council.
Mayor Pro Tim Delay had the same, we all did.
You know, but that, that never, that never, that never happened, so, you know, but we's able to purchase the land west of town, I think at a, at a very reasonable price, we did it with funding we'd got from COVID. That was able to enable us really to do that, we did our trade with the land, it all, it all fell into place. And just trying to capitalize on putting that, that work, like I said, that ninety-five, five grant makes it, makes it feasible.
And I guess the last thing I can say about perception is, most of our revenue that we get, we don't generate our own, that's, we are, as Mayor Peters said, we are a nanny state, not a nice state, but a welfare city. We get it, it's based on our population, the more people we lose, the less we don't expand, the less money we get, and it just redoubles back on itself. You start losing this, and lose this, and lose ability to do this, 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 and then you have nothing left, you can't do anything in the market, you've lost, you've lost all your revenue. So that would be my perception thing, is it, is it existential crisis for the town? Absolutely. Or is anybody that is against it, that's been here for fifty years, gonna see the benefits of it? Probably a little bit, but probably not, because it's long term, it's not short term. And that's the perception thing, thinking long term, not short term.
If, if you look at the perception out of Shoshone looking in, it's positive.
What did your, did you go to a doctor's appointment, and they're talking about how nice Shoshone was looking? She was just telling me that.
Well, I think part of the other thing is, is people, a lot of, you know, I ran into this one, I was still working, if I could call it work. They see grant money coming in and being spent, and they say, well, why isn't it spent to do this? Well, it's because that grant money is specifically for that. It's not like we can just say, we want a grant, give us a bunch of money, and then we decide how to spend it.
Yeah, that's, and that's a good thing, it has to get out, they don't get it, yeah, I agree.
They don't understand that, well, write a grant for this other thing, yeah, if you wanted to go eighty twenty, can't afford to match it.
Well, it's like the Shoshone Motel and Lip Rippers, that was a grant very specific to those two things, so, why didn't you do this over here? It was for, it was for these, and that's, I don't know how to answer the question, how do you change people's perception, I don't know if you can, they have to take the facts.
Well, some people just don't hear it either.
No.
What else?
But.
What, one thing I've noticed is, I have a lot of people coming up to me that have always been kind of quiet, yeah, they'll go vote for who they wanna vote for, da, 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 da. But people are starting to step out of their comfort zone now, and they wanna get involved, and they're like, hey, ho, let's go. So I, I'm seeing a lot of people that normally you wouldn't hear from, and I'm even talking with people that normally didn't wanna talk to me before. So that excites me.
Me like you, you retired here, you retired here, okay, he's not gonna retire here, but. But, so, here, here's, if I can put this in, in a perfect example of what the problem is, is that you raise a family here, your kids graduate, they leave, they go off. And what's kids do, they don't, I mean, it doesn't matter where you're at, they're gonna leave, the problem is they never come back, they don't bring their families back here, when they were ready to settle down. When they were ready to settle down, that's not where they come back to settle down. They don't. People just kind of fall into the job here. They raise their kids, they take off, they never come back. Population's been stagnant or in decline forever. But you look at the 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 area and and start looking at it from that perspective, having your families come back when they're in their mid thirties with their families and raising their kids here. You have to probably the top schools, if not the top school in the state, right there. But nobody, nobody, because we're here, very few people want to come live here and bring their families here when they're stuck with the options of a rundown abandoned building or house that's been abandoned for six, seven years, is decrepit. And they can't get a construction loan, you're going to get a loan for this. Now they have to get a loan for a house, and then they have to have their own cash to fix that house back up, even live in. It's hard to attract them. And that's what I think the existential crisis of the community is, is being able to expand that out. But it also benefits, like I said, through water taps, sewer taps, all those things that are required for us to be able to expand and service and maintain our lines, not have to only rely strictly on a grant like Land or Riverton. They can use their one percent monies to be able to do those things. We can't do that without a grant assistance, because we just don't want to get enough out of it. So if we don't grow population, we are never going to be able to do anything here in this town, bar none, won't happen.
Well, that's what for my own, so I'm not negative Nelly on the deal. I feel like I'm very optimistic. But when everybody talks about pushing the town.
Right.
I'm the guy that sits down, I've been here ten years, and I still look at it and say, who or what or where are these things ever going to? It's like trying to be honest and say what truly is expected. So you have the perception of a rat hole town. Anybody driving through, it's just a pass through, it's not a destination. So is there a perception that says we're going to make Shoshone a destination? And if we are, what is that destination?
I'm trying to.
Well, that, but that's, that's the part of me that's wondering, you know, I had these people buzz through the scrapyard from India. I've never been, you're just, what are you guys doing here? I've never seen such a thing. I'm, I said, well, you don't need to be driving to the middle of the yard. He's just, I said, you're going to come anyway. It was just, it's just something that he said. I thought, oh, the new, the new greatest destination in the world. But but what is just, you know, we only have X amount of space. So to say Shoshone is going to grow, it can only grow, and the population can't be five thousand here.
Probably not.
And as far as based on our our picture, what we have, our land, I think our land will dictate you can only become X amount of people.
I mean, what that and what that end number would be in fifteen years, say, everything goes smoothly, I don't know, probably over a thousand. It's maybe fifteen hundred, you know, it's not maximum what what we currently have. It could get to that, but it's not going to happen in a year or two.
No, but even if, even if it does, if so, if 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 this town got to three thousand population, if it got to that point, A, can it can it sustain? At that point, you could say, that's similar to Thurmup, and you say, okay, if it had three thousand people in this town, it would justify a grocery store, it would justify a fast food, something, maybe even a Redbox by that point. But but is this a town? Is this a place that can get to that? That's the question that I ask.
And if I had a crystal ball, I would tell you.
Sure.
But I can, alls I can say is if we don't provide an opportunity for things to develop, then they won't.
But the same token, it comes back to what is going to develop. So back with, back when this was a boom town, because there was uranium, yeah, I guess that was the history of it.
Uranium, oil and gas.
It doesn't exist anymore. And uranium is not coming back.
Well, tourism obviously is the is the a big driver here.
See, the problem with tourism, Shoshone's not a destination town. It's too far away from the dest, from where you're going to be on the map, in essence. I mean, if I'm going to Jackson, or if I'm going to to the south, southern part of Petons and Yalston, I go to Jackson. If I'm going to Yalston on the west side or the east entrance, I go to Cody, maybe Matiti, but Shoshone's too far away from a destination place, to quote, for many people.
I I.
I mean, it's two, three hours to Cody, another hour to escape.
You're for, not really. I mean, uh, Duvois is turning into a destination. We're trying, or the winter visitors come, we're trying to make all of Fremont County a destination. We're spending tens of thousands of dollars on advertising, just just pull that. Our numbers are up. We'll see if it justifies having a motel in Shoshone. I don't know, but but that is, but but that would have no impact on our on our project we're talking about right now.
All right, we're in the weeds.
Yeah, we're starting to get in the weeds.
The rough.
Yeah, rough. But but we're, yeah, we're, but that that wouldn't have any impact on what we're talking about right now.
No, but I I think the overall conversation is that it's when people come up and they.
It was a perception thing.
Why is the town doing this? What else is the town going to do? Like I said, there's a part of me that says it's not, is it fair to say there's going to be another gas station ever in this town? And if it is, where is that possibly going to be?
Probably north.
Probably, I mean, when you look at it, say, where there's ever going to be a grocery store in this town, where is it going to be? I mean, you look at commercial spots, and we are it's very limited to say a Smith's is going to get here, or a Family Dollar is going to get here. I mean, that's, that's the part saying, what do we hope for?
And 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 to kind of piggyback off of that, what I will say is the sewer project, what it does is, in essence, it's not going to cost the town any money, or very, very little. But what it does do is it does allow possibilities. So that that's as far as, I mean, that should be enough, I think, to explain. It doesn't cost much or little at all or nothing. But it does provide opportunities and potential. What that ultimately looks like? Don't know, but it does provide that ability for that to take place that otherwise would not exist.
Well, possibly opens up more commercial property out there too.
Yes.
Not for a gas station.
No.
But that's not really the end of the world if we didn't get another.
A bouncy house, or I mean, who who knows? But, you know, there there are some people in town that are starting to do things to try and it's not, we are a destination, obviously. We don't have, you know, one of the seven wonders of the world, so people will say, well, we have that thing out there that.
Scrapyard.
It's scrapyard, that thing takes.
Built some dinosaurs out there.
Eclipse stuff, yeah. So we have that, that might be, that might take off one day, I mean, in the realm of possibilities. But we do have the lake, and we have the lake, but what we do have is a stop on the way to the destination, that if we have the things, that's how you capitalize on tourism and putting on events and things like that. There are people in the community that are trying to do things that give a people reason to come here. Not permanently, not on a, you're not going to catch them every day, so you have, you know, but it does provide some economic benefit and boost to the town when they do. And the more people that do that, hopefully it becomes some kind of thing, like farmer's market, for example.
Well, I'm getting the mayor's attention on the track. Since, yeah, I mean, I realize all we can talk about is the business, but it's tied, well, this is tied to that because of the housing issue.
Right.
But the perfect example of what you just mentioned, I just happened to have been in a conversation two days ago with people learning. The Wyoming Territorial Prison is not a destination in and of itself, but it can get people to stop there for a day. And that's why they built that. That's what that was all about.
Let's build one here.
So, well, I'm still thinking about this world's largest steel dinosaur sitting out here east of town. But so, I mean, I understand what you're saying. And if somebody wants to stop and go fishing, that's even better, yeah. But we're not going to be a destination town for tourists that comes in for.
No, no, if we can capture some of that.
We'll catch the travelers. Well, it's three o'clock, let's just stay here. We got an RV campground right here.
Right. And and I will say one thing, I've only been here for a year, so give me a little bit of time, maybe I can do some more in ten years. Going back to what you said earlier.
Like ten years?
Well, even, even the old jailhouse will stop people if we had it in the right place, where people see it. Oh, heck, look at that, you know, just like with the park and everything else. Little things capture people, you know, and then they're coming through, and it's like, oh, heck, we come through here next year, let's go ahead and we only have twenty minutes or half an hour to stay here right now, but maybe we come through here next time, we'll plan our trip for, we just go ahead and stay the night here, then we finish our drive going up to the park or whatever.
You need our malt chalk back. But anyway.
But also remember, what I'm hoping for is this grant, going back to the perception thing, leads to some more goodwill with the state, but the COVID money, that, not say COVID, now the ARBA, that's four years of infusion over a four-year period. So that's four years of development that can come through. And the expectation is that SLID is going to reevaluate the fifty-fifty grants in the near future. And what those become for that other question, that's what I'm hoping to have an answer for here in the next two months.
Well, with the growth too, it's not just getting the tourist system and everything else. Shoshone is one heck of a good place to be a bedroom community for people working in Riverton and in Fremont. So that requires more housing, but they're just going to just be in a bedroom community. There's a lot of towns that don't get the traffic like this that are two and three thousand people, but they're bedroom. They're not even relying on the dangerous. There's a lot of towns like Tungtum, so we don't, we absolutely have to have people stay here for five, thirty days. People can work here and drive all day, because the housing costs are more for their buck.
I still think it ought to be recognized, though. Bob's the only person that has built a home, like a stick-built home in this town in how many years?
But also, how many, how many years has it been since the town's really done anything to entice people to build on?
I mean, it's just a thought.
So Jerry, Jerry, Jerry's best place. And then they built two habitat for housing homes. And I'm going through my mind insane. Since I've lived here, those are the four homes I think they've built.
When did you move here?
Eighty-one.
Yeah, I built mine in eighty. I built a new house in eighty.
Um, the confidence builders did commit to building two houses per year, obviously, didn't happen this year.
Well, actually, I I just spoke with him, and he was telling me he.
When was your house built? It was built.
Eighty-something, eighty-four.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
That's right, yeah, I forgot about that. Um, but he was telling me that he was actually going to wait and put out building out there because the cost of materials are so high. But his broker told him to build it anyways, even with that height, that cost structure, he goes, I will sell your house, and you'll still make money.
Yep, he told me that same thing.
Yeah, and that's what he told me, because I was like, wow.
Subdivisions in Castle, we're getting off topic.
Yeah, yeah.
Really stagnant.
Yeah, we're way out there.
I'm waiting for day or two, so we can say we went past last meeting.
Making our chance to.
Worth the taxpayer's dollars.
We do have.
We have one in the audience.
Care for our public here.
And I've talked way more than I wanted to.
I think collectively, I mean, we're all on board. No, no one's saying this is a bad idea. I don't think anybody's.
No, I'm just trying to like put things out there for information purposes, and my perspective that maybe something's remiss.
Yeah.
Or, you know, whatever.
People I've talked to say, this is my perception, and I really don't have an answer to give them a hundred percent saying, this is going to be a guarantee. And that's what they, people are wanting, is the guarantee.
I wish I could do it.
And saying, you know, you're saying, there's always these ifs, and ifs, and what if happens?
Sounds like an environmentalist.
I think everything you do, what if this happens?
You're right, but they're still asking the question, and I cannot stop them from asking.
I think you think it's fair. I I think it's made it's not our place, but it would be like, someone says, well, the mayor's doing this and he rents the farm. It's it's coming up with the answer, saying that it doesn't matter, but it's being able to say, this is what I do. Just like you said in the beginning, say, I don't link the two of them together. I had a house, I rent to that person, that's what I choose to do. If people want to take him, call it something different, then that's, that's totally up to them. But that's, that's what I think is, it's you being somewhat guarded, saying, I'm striving not to, because you are kind of in the middle. I think that's fair to say. There's a lot of effort. You don't do anything for my business, but you gave them a national holiday. So it's fair to say the perception is the mayor's doing an awful lot for this group on this side of the.
They they came with a business plan. If they wouldn't have came with a business plan, we wouldn't be here.
I came with a business plan, he gave me a trash committee. I just want that noted.
Uh, you didn't come with a business plan.
Call what it is. I came with ten years down the road, putting in my roots, and still haven't got a holiday out of the deal yet. Anyway, sorry, it's off topic.
Well, you know, it is off topic, but that topic's been up a lot tonight. I don't think it's proper to be speaking so much about your business tonight, but we're supposed to be talking about this. It's economic development.
Sure.
So. It is, but we're sorry, so I mean, I don't mind. I want you to grow. I got no issue with that. But what I'm saying is, is this is what we're supposed to be speaking about. You're right.
And the perception is the mayor's in bed with the company that we're trying to speak with, so.
Well, we haven't spent any money, so how is he in bed with us?
Because they offered to put up fifty thousand dollars.
That's a good thing.
I've had it.
Yeah, I agree here.
I've had it.
Why don't I make a motion to adjourn? Like that? Our public hearing, haven't we?
Yes, we have. We've got off topic on this.
Many times.
And all, all, much of the question was relevant. We've explained why this is going, we're moving forward on this, going to cost the town very little money to help the town potentially grow. Makes our land, we bought worth a lot more money.
Well, there's also a legal issue here, Mr. Mayor. We can't go on that tangent.
No, we cannot. We need to, no, we can't.
Yeah.
We need to stay on target. Does anybody else have anything to say about the expansion of the sewer line? Any questions that pertain directly to that?
Yes, I'll reiterate what Councilman Demick said. We're all on board. We think that it's a good idea.
Okay.
I just bailed you out, Mike.
Any further, if any further discussion? If there are none, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Been moved, moved by Councilman Heckney to adjourn, seconded by Councilman Weaver. Any further discussion? None being, pardon?
There's no vote being taken on this too.
None being, say aye to adjourn, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion passed unanimously to adjourn at eight oh what?
Five.
Eight oh five.